Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the June 25, 2018 Board of Education Meeting. Could I, I'd like to get an approval of the agenda. Mary?
Yep, I appro, I, uh...
What?
At the Agenda of Monday, June 25, 2018, Board of Education Meeting be approved is set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
So this requires, can I get a motion?
Is there a second?
A second?
Second.
Director, Director Portrading?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Vice President Humbles?
Aye.
Now, we have a report from Dr. Buck.
Yep, alright, thank you. Nutritious meals are vital to the academic, behavioral, and physical development of our students, and for some, access to meals at school is their best chance at receiving a nutritious meal each day. Our school district, along with several area organizations, have worked to ensure that access to nutritious meals don't stop during the summer months. Eight Cedar Rapids Community School District sites are participating in the federally-funded Summer Food Service Program, which provides meals free of charge to children in our community. So far, we've served approximately 800 lunches and 500 breakfasts a day, and the numbers are increasing each day. Isn't that amazing? Our Human Resources Team continues to work hard to attract dedicated and talented staff for all of our departments and open positions. You'll recall that during the school year, we began holding hiring events, and we've had another of these events, and we have another of these events in the works. The summer hiring event is scheduled for July 23. It's intended to attract employees for Transportation, Custodian, and Food Nutrition Departments, as well as Parrot Professionals. January's hiring event for teachers resulted in 20 hires, and our two transportation events resulted in 17 hires. The summer hiring event will begin to be heavily promoted and advertised on July 2, and we look forward to welcoming new employees in these departments to our CRCSD team. Kyle Kazimore, if you were here for the big presentation recently, Kyle was one of the students that was here. So Kyle, a recent Jefferson grad, and his documentary team, made up entirely of area high school students, submitted their film "Somewhere Only We Know" to the Alt Film Festival, at the Toronto Film Festival, and last Monday night, it won Best Feature Documentary category. Isn't that cool?
Yeah.
So, uh, this is an amazing accomplishment by a group of local students and artists. It was a joint effort between the media company Kyle Formed, Ambivalent Studios, and Iowa Big. So congratulations to Kyle, go Jayhawks, and Iowa Big. Kids on Course University just completed its first successful week with more than 700 students, and federal funding for this program is getting early support in the budget process. The 21st Century Community Learning Center Program funds almost a third of the budget for Kids on Course University. Without this resource, we would only be able to have a program approximately half of the size that we currently do. So the University of Iowa did a study on the academic impact of Kids on Course University last summer, and found 50% of KCU students started the next school year with higher reading scores than they did at the end of the previous school year, and 80% of the students grew their math skills over the course of the seven-week summer program. No other school district in Iowa is administering a program of this type at zero cost to participating families. Kids on Course University is truly a valuable component of our school district, so that's underway, and 700 students, so lots of good news.
Thank you. Are there any board reports?
I don't have a report, but I have a comment. Steve Graham and I took time last week to cut a ribbon at Monroe Elementary that is now repurposed to Monroe Place, and we took a tour of the building, and it was really interesting. And because of the historic tax credits that Ani had to comply with, you walk in, and it's the living room, if you will, and there's the full chalkboard, which it happens to be in vogue now in a lot of apartments, so it was really cool. It was interesting, they have a playground in the back, they're gonna have an off-leash dog park even further back on the property, and it was really exciting. There was a good turnout of local city officials, and a nice conversation in the group about repurposing schools, so I was really, I drive by that school on my way to work, to and from, and I've been watching this transformation, and of course, it sat for six years. So it was really, it was just very exciting. So thank you for coming and giving the history that I thought was vital to that group to hear. And there were lots of teachers there, and almost all the parents I stood amongst, they all said, "All three of my kids were in Monroe," and everybody that was there had some connection with Monroe, but it was very fun.
Any others?
I just, really briefly, President Lavery, myself, and Dr. Buck were able to go to the Iowa Big Open House that they had last week, and it was just really wonderful to be able to talk to some of the educators that are involved in that program, and talk about just the awesome things that students are achieving with Iowa Big, and to really get to talk to educators and see them go, "Oh, you know, they get this hands-on learning, and it just all makes sense," and it was just really cool to see how invested and involved our staff is with that. It's just, it was great. Good opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Communications, Delegation, and Petitions. We have two. I ask that when your name is called, that you could state your name and address for record, and you will have up to five minutes to address the board. The first one is Todd Lund. And there'll be a timer too, Todd.
Thanks. Todd Lund, 520 Lime Rock Drive Northwest. So I got a few things to talk about. The first thing, since we're voting on the Architect of Record, I never really got a time to respond to the board last time. Some of the direction seemed to be pointed at me. My biggest concern about this plan on the architect is why doesn't the board decide $300,000 is not enough? Basically, it was a local company versus $300,000 in savings, and you're leaving that up to 15 citizens chosen by the district. I'm not sure why the board doesn't decide that. You should get the data and then weigh everything, instead of letting this 15 committee, 15 individual committee, decide, "Okay, it's okay, we will ignore the $300,000 in savings to get a local company." That's my big complaint now, is why aren't you making that decision, instead of having these 15 individuals? And my other thing about that is, when I looked through the presentation, they talked about 10 companies bidding on that, but it only showed nine. Why don't people catch these little things? How many of these little things add up? There's 10 companies, but only nine, I think only eight presented data, and one said they dropped out early? And I talked to Steve Graham after that, and he said, "I think another company dropped out," but, you know, the data doesn't show that. Why doesn't, oops, why doesn't someone catch it, the board or the Oversight Committee? There's little things that just seem to go through. Who's looking at the data? Doesn't seem like, doesn't seem like the board or the Oversight Committee really looks into the data. It just seems like they take what the district has, and they go with it. My second thing is, I know everybody thought this, the busing, back a few months ago, the busing? It was, everybody said, "Oh, that's a great, great presentation." But when you look at the data through the busing, it shows 10 of the elementaries are gonna be past the benchmark. So does that mean the board's not gonna care about the benchmark anymore for kindergarten, first grade, second grade? Or is this data really not valid? It seems like 10 of these schools are gonna need to probably bus 30 kids to another school just to meet the benchmarks. So either the data's no good, or the board is gonna get rid of the benchmarks. Which one is it? Because it's gotta be one or the other. So if the data's really good, then you're gonna say, "Oh, we don't care about benchmarks. We don't care about kindergartners in first and second grade having smaller class size." It's gotta be one or the other. So I'd really like the board to look over this again, the busing information, and see what the data shows, and maybe explain how you can move all these students somewhere else, and how much will the real cost be? This isn't the real cost if you plan on busing 20 to 30 kids somewhere else. It can't be real data. So I'd like someone to look into that. And then, from the last meeting, Van Buren, I hear that Van Buren's growing a whole lot. I think the master plan had Van Buren at 379, 379 schools, and Dr. Buck always talked, like, "There's no growth around Van Buren, they're coming from somewhere else." So what I got from the district is, in 2018, it'll almost be 90 more kids going to Van Buren than when this plan was developed. So where are those 90 kids located? My worry is they're over by Westdale, by the water tower around there, and they're gonna go to Coolidge, Hoover. Do they have the capacity in this plan for 90 extra students? And it sounds like it's gonna be more than 90 students. Sounds like Van Buren might keep growing, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think that's what the email said from the district. So is there any plans to maybe look, before you start Coolidge, maybe redistrict the whole school district, and maybe put students in a, it doesn't have to be final, just see where kids would be placed before you start moving along this process? Because I'm really afraid, if there's a bunch of growth in Van Buren, that maybe we didn't account for it in this plan, because the data is 90 kids short just on one school. I'm not sure about the other schools. I'm trying to get the data to see, maybe some of their schools are shrinking, but I think we need to look before we start going into Coolidge and Hoover, because once you start the process, and maybe you close Truman, I don't want later on, maybe eight years down the road, you find out the plan didn't really work, and you need another school somewhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Lund.
Thank you. Next up is Leland Frye. Please state your name and address.
Leland Frye, 2052 Lynn Boulevard Southeast. So, I'm gonna do the impossible, I got two topics I wanted to talk about, and I wanted to talk about the Eastern Iowa Science and Engineering Fair, but my conscience won't let me rest if I don't talk about school safety, to pay homage to all the young people and adults that have been killed, so. I know the school's working on, I would just like to see, and I hope some things, some concrete changes happen. I wouldn't be against teachers that wanted to be unarmed, I wouldn't be against metal detectors. I know schools have talked about kind of a hotline for students with mental health issues. I've been at foundation too for 30 years, four years before that, and I can say, in probably the last two years, it's been the most challenging in 30 years. That's saying the mouth though, you know? I don't have the answer, but I'd go back to, how do we change the fabric of that family? And I think anytime we have a discussion about how do we work with young people, if we're gonna be intellectually honest, we have to look at that family, fabric of our society, and everything else we have to look at, so. And one of the things I do often is, every so often, I deliver meds to the schools, and some of the schools, I know Jefferson and I could walk right in there, you know, any time, and if I had a gun or something, or probably most of the high schools, I think, so that kind of bothers me, given the nature where we're in, and when people say, "Well, we don't want to turn this school into like a military," but our culture has changed, and you know, if you lost a loved one, or a mother, a father, a brother, sister, all of us would probably think differently about how radical we so come. So I'm just hoping we think differently about how to pursue this. And I think even when I go to like a middle school, I hit that bell, and they let me in, I say, "I'm delivering medications." Well, maybe I wouldn't be, and I get in. I just wonder about those things, you know, in this day and age, and I just think we have to get somewhat radical, which is go to the root of something, I think, so that doesn't happen here, you know? So, anyway, the other thing I want to talk about is, some of you know, I've worked with the Cedar Rapids School System for a number of years, I've been on the Eastern Iowa Science and Engineering Fair Board. Cedar Rapids Schools do a lot of great things, but it's not my point.
Yeah, we can't, this mic.
So anyway, so it's not about that Cedar Rapids Schools doesn't do great things. I believe that it could even become better by doing research. And research is so important, and I've been on the board for about eight years, and we get most of our students from southeastern Iowa. Centerly, and I think Donaldson are the gold standard for research projects, and I was lucky to go to the International Science and Engineering Fair three or four years ago in Los Angeles, and I met kids from all around the world, from Israel to Russia to Moldova, oh, southern Brazil, all over the world, and it's really interesting, all these kids that are working on environmental projects or research projects where there's health to make our society a better place, so. If I had a goal someday, and what I'm saying is not easy to do, I know that well, but with Cedar Rapids with Marion, and Lynn Mar, and Prairie, would have enough students to have their own science fair someday. That's down the road. The one, the Eastern Iowa Science Fair, has been going on for 50 years. And Thomas Keck from Iowa City won the Nobel Prize in Chemistry in 89 at the University of Colorado. He competed at the science fair, and what's interesting, he won a lot of prizes, which a lot of kids do, but he never won the top one, which you get to go to the International Science and Engineering Fair. But he won a Nobel Prize in Chemistry. There could be another one here. And about three years or so ago, I think Cedar Rapids had one or two students involved in the whole project, and the young lady from Kennedy went to the International Science and Engineering Fair, incredibly talented young person, so we have it. So my goal would be, I handed out some information here, but I think it would be, you gotta find one teacher, you folks know this better than me, in each school or classroom that even to take on this thing. It's a lot of work, but it really is rewarding for kids that do research. And then I would even have somebody come up from southeast Iowa with the teachers, and work with them on how to get started, because it's a tough process, it's not easy. But I've seen the benefits. We have about 200 projects a year at Lindale Mall, we had our 2018 science fair, you know? So, research is so important, because it creates jobs for everybody else. And I work in Human Services, but I know the value of research, even though I don't know how to do research, but I know how important it is. So anyway, I appreciate you considering that, and I handed out some information there, and you can get in touch with me, and like I said, we gotta find some interested teachers, because it really is the teaching, I hope there's money after school for teachers to be involved in working with kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like to discuss or vote on separately at this time? If not, I ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
We'll need a roll call.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Portrading?
Aye.
Vice President Humbles?
Aye.
Next, we move to Learning and Leadership. Presentation on High Reliability Schools and the School Improvement Plan overview.
Well, Directors, School Board, thank you for having us this evening, and Superintendent Buck, we would like to kind of take a mile-high view of our continued work with high reliability schools as a framework to dig in a little deeper for our school improvement plan process, which, as we roll into July next week, hard to believe, that our school improvement plan process is really guiding from our strategic plan. So this always will connect back to you and your work, so we just want to let you know where we currently are, and how high reliability schools framework is driving our school improvement plans. So, just as a quick reminder for all of us, as well as the audience, that we have started our work a couple of years ago around the theory of action, to develop our core beliefs. So the six beliefs, we have belief statements behind each and every single one of those beliefs, from equity to leadership, and that drove our strategic plan, which was launched a year ago, in five focus areas, which were bold steps around facilities, intercultural mindset, learning, workforce, and story. And then, we drove into metrics, and that's how are we going to know the results of our work around the strategic plan? So, that continues in our five focus areas. Everything that we're doing, notice, has the future ready in front of it, because it's every learner...
Future-ready.
Excellent. That is our vision. So here's our strategic plan, which you all are well-versed with, and have seen before, and on the bottom of that strategic plan are our metrics, but we're trying to help everybody understand how the dots connect, from beliefs to strategic plan, to what does this live and look like in a school? So, the theory of action, as you can see at the top in the middle there, that's the circle of the beliefs, which then drove our strategic plan. And now, how we accomplish that is through a framework of high reliability schools. So just as a reminder, we're going from what has maybe felt like district demands to school supports. And the high reliability schools framework, although it's a district model that we're using across the district, it really starts at the school level, based on the students' needs in each one of our schools. So Rod and I are gonna walk you through what the current status of the data that we received this spring, and how that data is driving our school improvement plans. So I'll hand it over to Rod.
So if you remember, when we talked about the high reliability schools model, I'm a little taller. We talked about these five levels, starting with the very foundation is, every building needs to have safety and have this collaborative culture, all the way up to the top of personalized competency-based learning. And so, we started this year focused on Level One. We did assessments around Level One, where we had the administrator, the staff, the students, and the parents and community fill out an assessment to provide feedback on, "How do you think this school really is around safety and being collaborative?" But we also didn't stop there. We said, "As we begin our school improvement plans, we really need to look at those first three levels of effective teaching in every classroom, as well as the guaranteed and viable curriculum." So you'll see, in our school improvement plans, all of those will be there. But starting with the safe and collaborative, we got that assessment back, and I would tell you, overall, the results were positive. I would say, every school, the feedback was, all the stakeholders said, "The school is safe. There seems to be a collaborative environment." Now, there were differences among schools, and that data, they're gonna use that data to prioritize what they focus on in their school improvement plans. You probably can't see this, but out beside of it, all the leading indicators, which would drive one to think of that their environment is being safe and collaborative, like, we believe that it's safe, we believe that there is collaborative work groups happening to address student concerns and issues, as well as, we believe that we have an opportunity, this is parents, students, to provide input in decisions that are made in the schools. Those are some of the leading indicators around the Level One. But Level One is around two primary things, safe culture and a collaborative culture. And so, as they're putting together their school improvement plans, they're looking at their data, and then they're saying, "How would we measure goodness around those indicators, around safety?" So we'll look at some discipline data, we have some frameworks in place, like PBIS or Safe and Civil, and we're also working on our intercultural mindset, so how are we doing there? So, this whole framework is based on, there's a leading indicator, whether lagging indicator, so that I monitor my progress. Not only do I get the assessment, I begin to look at data periodically to know what really is the culture in our building. The big second one is around collaboration at Level One. And so, the professional learning communities is the structure that we've put in place, where teacher teams and collaborative groups really are coming together, meeting regularly to look at the curriculum, and the assessment, and instruction, and student achievement. And I would say, most buildings, you will find this in their school improvement plan. This is an area where we've done a lot of work, but I think that we found that we still have a lot more work to do around PLCs. We also said, "Let's focus on effective teaching in every classroom," because we know that's really what drives student results and student achievement. And there are a couple of quotes here. "The most effective classroom, a student will learn in six months what those in an average classroom will take a year to learn." But also, on the other end of that, the least effective classroom, it'll take two years for those students to learn what an average classroom would." So effective teaching does matter. And so, we are implementing across the district, we have aligned to the Marzano Instructional Framework, the new art and science of teaching. We have started this journey a couple of years ago. Last summer, we provided training to teachers, 222 teachers attended that training, 45 administrators. This summer, we are underway, and we're gonna provide it to a little less than 500 teachers. So, we really are getting after this, because we realize what effective teaching in classrooms will do to help students achieve.
Thank you, Rod. And so, we know we have great teachers. What we didn't have necessarily was common language of how we were measuring instruction, pre-K through 12, and now we have that common language. And so, if you look at the slide here, the 2.1 in the left-hand column is what we call that leading indicator around instruction, and this is how the school leader, how a principal would be communicating their vision, and the lagging indicators are the expectations for a school leader to make sure that this is happening. And we keep saying this over and over again, that we know that's the sweet spot, is the way that you have an effective teacher in every classroom is when there's a leader in the building, being able to support their work and give them feedback. And so our IDS provide the coaching, and then our principals provide the evaluation of that, and how we need to assess their needs. So our job as district-level supports are identifying, each school might need something a little different, based on their students' needs and based on their teachers' needs. As the leadership teams in each one of the buildings identify that, we are providing supports for them, so it's differentiated professional learning and supports for each building. So notice this school-wide model of instruction, school-wide model of instruction, common language, that the principal and the IDS, and that we can use to align as a system. In addition to that, we have other things that are folding into our school improvement plans to support our work around equity. So certainly through instruction, but also, we have at the high school level, our ICAT plans, which is the four-year plan, the profile of a graduate, what are the plans for each and every child, as well as our equity work. Equal Opportunity Schools has given us a lens on our future-ready learning data that was presented to you in April, around our student enrollment and our post-secondary readiness options, career pathways, AP courses, as well as our dual-credit options. So how are our students being prepared throughout our entire system with common language, common expectations, so that we make sure that we not only have leading indicators, but the lagging indicators is, how is this functioning, and what does it look like at the school level? So the guaranteed and viable curriculum, that is the Level Three, that is what we want all of our students to know and to be able to do throughout our entire system, and how are we reporting on that? So we have our common assessments in both literacy and math, and more curriculum work is being done this summer to support our other core areas. But this is, as a teacher, I know the standards that I'm measuring my students against, not measuring them against each other, the student against the standards, and that's the guaranteed and viable curriculum. So as we continue to support the Iowa Core and our work, we are focused on access for all students, and that all of our students have access to the guaranteed and viable curriculum. And so, to highlight some of our students who need differentiation or support, certainly, our second language learners need different supports in order to get access. Our students who qualify for special education services need different supports to get access, but instead of pulling them... supports to get access, but instead of pulling them away from access, we want them to gain access. So, our technology plan that we are learning, remember, it's a learning plan, not just a technology plan, is going to be essential for this work. So, again, this is what we want for every child, as we presented that at our most recent meeting around PSYX recommendations around these competencies. But now, we know clearly what the target is for all of our kids. Our schools now have a framework of data and support that we will use at the district level to support them on their journey. So, ultimately, high reliability schools drives our school improvement plans, and then we also have now, we're going to Texas here in a couple of days, at the High Reliability Schools Conference, and some of our school leaders are also attending that, how we can support our school leaders in a way that makes sense for their building improvement plans. So, that's all that we have for you this evening, and we're very open to questions or responses.
Are there any questions at all?
I do have one.
Okay.
It's up to you.
You go ahead first.
Okay, so, I did receive that Safe and Collaborative Culture, High Reliability Schools email, and did the whole survey, did the whole thing. So, I know I've had other parents that have kind of asked, "Okay, what comes of this?" And I know, as far as communication within some of the buildings, I think, like you were saying, some of that data is still kind of being looked at, to ultimately see what will be the outcome of it, right? So, based on whatever that outcome is, will there be a follow-up survey, just for that particular level, or will there be other levels where there will be kind of the same interaction and dialogue in that way?
That's an excellent question. So, the school improvement plans, and I would say at this point, we had a really great session with all of our principals in the afternoon of our executive council meeting. So, they all brought drafts that were created from their building leadership teams. So, the building leadership teams unpacked all that data, what did parents say, and also, Marzano's team gave us coaching sessions for every building, to our coaching sessions, for those leadership teams to say, "Okay, so what does this actually mean for our building, and what are going to be our goals and metrics for next year?" The principals brought those drafts together, and we did what was called a tuning protocol. So, they sat in triads, gave each other feedback, got ideas from each other of how they were doing their metrics. And now, as they synthesize those school improvement plans, those certainly will be pushed out to the community members, but every single, what we call the lagging indicator, and I'll just back the truck up here a little bit, to one of these slides, every single one of these, these indicators, they have to determine, if they've highlighted, say, that second line there, of new teachers having professional development opportunities to learn about our school-wide model of instruction, how are they going to know that that's happening? So, that data will have what we call quick data collects. It's not going to be that lengthy survey that you already took.
Right.
It probably will be a little more simplified, and we want to make sure that we have increased participation, so probably at parent-teacher conferences, ways that we could collect quick data from our families to say, "This is what you said we needed to work on, this is how we're working on it, now how are we doing?" And having a more frequent check, instead of one time a year, really long, frequent, small checks on what we've prioritized at every building.
Okay. Got it. Thanks.
I have a question. When you talked about effective teaching in every classroom, and the support they will receive from the leadership within each school, how do we make sure that the teachers are effective?
You know, the-
Is there an assessment in place?
There, there is. Well, so, there is, there are, there are many. But this is, the, the nice thing about this instructional framework, it's all about growth. It's not about an "I get you," it's not about "you're not doing it," it's about, "Where are you now, and what is your goal, and how can..." There are very clear strategies to help people achieve that goal. But the goal's not just about my own self-efficacy and building up as a, as a teacher, it's what's the product of my student learning that's a result of a change of my instruction, or a growth in my instruction. So, every single, there's forty-three, what we call elements in the framework, and every single one of them has a growth-based scale, that you might start at beginning, and then you're getting a little bit more to the application level, all the way to the point where you're innovative in your practice. And there's clear examples of what that looks like. So, for what my element might be, that I would like to work on, may not be the same as Rod's, but we are together in one PLC, and we might determine, we're going to work on both of these things together. Now, a principal and an IDS have very clear targets to help us grow on a growth-based continuum. Our hope would be, and we talked about this earlier in the spring, is to think about this as a way for, that's not just driving our professional learning, but how we are discussing instruction together. And just when I talked about students being measured upon a standard, and not against each other, we want the same thing for our teachers, that they really have clear targets for their own growth, and it's not about a competition between each other, but rather, their own professional learning and growth.
So, a companion to that part of the conversation, a couple of years back, a statewide committee put together a group that looked at kind of world-class, high-quality teacher evaluation systems, and they came out with six recommendations. So, we are going to embark on a conversation, and I don't think this would be a surprise to our staff, knowing that we're expecting them all to get trained in the use of the NASAD, the New Art and-
By fall of 2019, everyone will have the training.
Yeah, so I think they have a sense of what's coming, as we rebuild the system, is that that'll be at the center of it. But if you take that document that had those six recommendations, one of which is a rubric-based, or a rubric-based framework for evaluating teachers, it's, that will become the backbone and foundation for our modernized evaluation system. So, Linda and maybe myself, because I love this topic, we need to pull a group together this school year, and revise and update our teacher evaluation system, and we'll likely start with that document, because the six things that emerged out of that are really the heart of the matters, it relates to building a teacher evaluation system that does what Noreen said we really want, which is growth from our staff, but also is an accountability system that is evaluation at the same point. So, we have some work to do on that, but we'll get it done.
Thank you.
I have a question as well. So, I, I know that there's going to be some differences in instruction and focus, based on what's assessed for a school-wide need, and then there's going to be school-wide common language. Is there a way that that common language is also going to be able to be used, so that we can make comparisons, not only look at growth within a school, but kind of look at, at what's successful in one school, are they-
Yes.
-using the same language in this school, are they using the same processes, so there can be a comparison between schools as well?
So, the instructional framework is, I guess you could say, the common language. How that's approached within each school might have some nuances, or like what their coaching cycles look like, or how they're processing that. But that is the common language, and the scales are, scales are the scales across the system, they're, they're the same. So, yes, we will be able to have that metric. There's one, I'll click, can I take one more click in? I get all jacked up about this again. So, so there is a, a tool that the New Teacher Center, we've been collaborating with over several years, specifically supporting our new teachers, new-to-the-profession teachers, who get an induction coach, win a partnership with the AEA, they have a full-time, full-release induction coach, as well as some mentoring happening within their building. But the New Teacher Center has a tool that will allow us to collect this exact data for every teacher. So, we'll see it from a system point of view, of what elements are we focused on, and what's our growth been, all the way down to individual teachers will be able to see their growth within that system as well. So, we're excited about the data collection part, just to see where, where are our priorities as a system, based on each individual teacher, but also, what, then it tells us what the professional learning needs are as we move forward. Where are people focused, what are the needs?
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, hopefully what you hear is, we are continually working to bring alignment to the system. So, when you think back a few years ago, board was very interested in the strategic plan, and so now we have that belief system in place, strategic plan in place, and now, so what are the underpinnings and tools that we can continue to fold back on, to deliver on this? So, it's, it's, it's really great thinking by a lot of, a lot of folks.
You know, it really is all about the teacher, and the effectiveness in the classroom. So, thank you for that work in that area, very much.
I just want to say one thing before you wrap it up, or you're ready to wrap it up. May I have the-
Yeah.
-mic for just a second?
Yes.
I usually do this, but tonight is a pretty interesting and exciting moment, and kind of more sad, but I'll not make it that sad. Mary Ellen and Steve have served this district for a long time, and we are very appreciative of their work and efforts, and it is their final board meeting tonight with us. And so, I just wanted to acknowledge both of them, and the amazing people they are, and pretty awesome educators as well. So, thank you, Mary Ellen.
I'll second that. Do you mind if I say something, Nancy? Think of all of the change that you all have been involved in, right? Semester, or semesters, trimesters to semesters, magnet schools, closing schools, the challenges that we've had in the budget over the years. Thank you, Steve, for all of the award-winning financial reporting that, that you've been able to achieve, and how proud you should be as you leave this district, and the changes that you've made with each and every one of our students, our staff, and we wish you nothing but the best.
And I want to say thanks to both of you. I am envious, though, because you're going to Florida. And I wish you well. You, you both have done an excellent job for this district, and you truly will be missed. And with that being said, board members, if you could review your calendars, and also complete your evaluation forms, and my last thing to say is, the meeting is adjourned.